Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 28th, 2020 Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we move to the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to quickly review. There's two opportunities for public comment this evening. If you would like to make a public comment, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. For agenda items only, please put the agenda item in the subject line and your name and address in the body of the email. That's the first opportunity for public comment. The second opportunity for public comment will be at the end of the meeting. Again, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. And just put public comment in the subject and your name and address in the body, and you'll be recognized again. So the important part is the first public comment is limited to agenda items only. The second public comment is open comment period. With that, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
Public for which stands.
Stands one nation under God.
In the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any flag presentations or special presentations tonight. So if you'll just give me a second, I just want to check, are there any public comments for the agenda items only? Bill, you know?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, well, let's move into the body of the meeting then, please. We'll start out with consent items. Approval of the minutes, Frank?
If there are no objections, I request that the minutes be approved by unanimous consent.
None from me. Okay, approved by consent. Thank you. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, the bills list for October 14th, 2020, total all funds, $2,671,084.36. And then we have the bills list for October 28th, 2020, total all funds, $952,452.60.
There's no questions. Approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. We have no public hearings or unfinished business this evening, so we'll move right into new business. Barry, would you introduce preliminary and final plan of made minor subdivision, Davis Minor Subdivision?
Sure. Thanks, Adam. Is the applicant here tonight or on Zoom or?
Barry, there's a Joe Blackburn is here representing. I believe Joe is here for that reason.
Yes, yeah, his hand is up.
Okay, good. All right.
Promoting him now.
So maybe I'll just give for the board's benefit, I'll just give a little background on this. This is a large parcel that's on Sackasford Road. It's about 500 feet northwest of Orchard Road. And the proposal we have before us tonight is to subdivide a 287,834 square parcel into two lots. One lot would be just over two acres. That'd be Lot 1. And the second lot would be 15.78 acres, Lot 2. There's an existing dwelling on Lot 1 that will remain, and no construction is being proposed on Lot 2 at this time. So this is a very preliminary process that was just subdividing it. The property owners only proposing a subdivision at this time with the intent of continuing to farm near the rear parcel. Apparently, there was a similar lot line change on the same road that we did, I believe, last year, and that was approved. What I'd like to do, if I could, Adam, is just read a motion. This proposal has gone through all the boards, and we've had comments from our various engineers, planning commission, and also from the county. But if I could just read a motion, I'd like to do that. So you're in mute?
Does Mr. Blackburn need to present anything at all, or is he just standing by?
I can stand by and give my comments after the motion if Mr. Moore is.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I would, this is a pretty straightforward thing. So I thought, you know, we had all the township professionals have done a lot of input on this, but I'll just read the motion, then if you have any comments, and then we can talk about it as a board. I move that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval that the Davis preliminary final approval subdivision plan. Wait, I'm sorry, I missed it from reading it right now. That's right. So I move that we approval, I move to that we approve of the Davis preliminary finer minor subdivision plan, SLD 20-1, subject to compliance with the Gilmore Associates Review Letter dated October 13th, 2020, Panoni Associates Review Letter dated October 8th, 2020, and the McMahon Associate Review Letter dated October 15th, 2020. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted. In addition, the following are the conditions of the approval. Prior to construction, a fee in lieu of sidewalks required based on the township fee schedule as calculated by the township engineer. Item two, prior to construction, a fee in lieu of recreation open space should be submitted in an amount of $6,206.86 for the proposed building at the lot at the time of the building of the permit being submitted. This fee is not applicable on the lot with the existing dwelling. Since there'll be one other additional lot being added, there'll be only one fee of the $6,206.86. Prior to construction, approval of the Bucks County Health Department is required for the on-lot sewage and water facilities. Item four, prior to construction, the applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, escrow agreement, in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. A note shall be added to the record plan identifying items to be addressed at the building permit stage. And the last item is a selfish disclosure is required to record it online outlining these conditions and items to be addressed prior to the building permit being approved. So that's the motion on the floor.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Board comment, Barry, anything else?
No, I think this is a, it's a very preliminary plan. The requirements on this particular area is a minimum of two acres. So both new lots, you know, Lot 1 and Lot 2 will exceed the minimum requirements of the township. So I would support this motion as presented.
Thanks, Barry. Frank?
Nothing further than.
Eileen?
I have a question. If one lot is two acres and the other lot is 15 acres, Mr. Blackburn, are they looking down the road to have a housing development there?
Great question. Joe Blackburn from Whistler Pearlstein, thank you for having me this evening. No, there is absolutely no contemplation at this time for any development or improvement on what's identified on the plans as Lot 2, which would be 15 to 16 acres. That is simply being carved off from the house in the front, which is a rental. Mr. Davis is, I guess, exiting the landlord business, if you will, but desires to remain an active farmer. So he's simply subdividing off the 15 to 16 acres in the rear, which are contiguous with the 40 acres to the east, which he currently actively farms in order to keep those two tracks together. My guess is he would at some point in time, you know, in the not-too-near, not-too-distant future, be looking to, you know, divest himself of the lot with the home, but obviously keep the active farm land in the rear. So again, no, no improvements whatsoever proposed. Mr. Moore was accurate. We've done, or we would be amenable to a notice being recorded against the property, which we did with the 879 Sackasford Project, which is literally three doors down the road to the west, which simply identifies that Lot 2 is not currently an approved building lot because we're not going through the process of identifying all those necessary permits, or rather securing those permits, and enumerating the outstanding items that will be required if and when someone in the future did ultimately want to have the house on there. It's the exact same approach that we did with the Andrews property, three doors up. And I am joined by Mark Havers this evening as well, the project engineer, so I can certainly make either myself or Mark available for any other questions. But I think Mr. Moore hit the high notes, which is no improvements, simply just drawing a lot line to carve off the existing home and the curtilage.
And you were very, thank you for letting us know what Mr. Davis's thoughts were about doing that. I didn't realize that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else, Eileen?
Nope.
Kim?
I'm good.
No, I have no comments either. Seems pretty straightforward. Here now, we have a motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution for a planning module for Herschel Homes on Spring Avenue. Also, Barry?
Sure. And once again, this is something in the very early stages. Herschel Homes has submitted plans for a three-lot subdivision on Spring Avenue. Spring Avenue is in Holland off of Buck Road. And what they're looking for at this point is submitting a planning module to the DEP for the approval of onsite sewage system. As part of that process, a resolution has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. So once again, this is a very early preliminary stage. They just want to be able to, you know, submit to the DEP for potentially on-lot sewage treatment. And the application's been completed and approved. We just need to have this board sign off on it. So I can make a motion if I could, please, Adam?
Please.
I move that the DEP Resolution R-20-1C for plan revision for the new development, land development for Herschel Homes be approved for the Spring Avenue subdivision.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is the motion a second? Any discussion? Barry, anything else?
No, I think it's, it would be a nice housing development, as I understand it. And, you know, so it's a, I would support this, absolutely.
Thanks. Kim?
I'm good.
Comments? Eileen? Frank?
None from me.
No comments from me either. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is consider authorization to advertise and ordinance reducing the speed limit on New Road from Second Street Pike to Hatborough Road from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Frank?
Excuse me. The Township Administration has been receiving complaints about speeding on the section of New Road from Second Street Pike to Hatborough Road. That road section also has a school, new homes being developed near the intersection with Second Street Pike, and the development of a trailhead from New Road to Township Park. Based on these issues, the administration has recommended that the speed limit along that section of New Road be reduced from 35 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. Well, the Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code allows municipalities to establish 25 mile per hour speed limits on any local road or residential area, and ordinance is required so that the speed limit is enforceable by our police department. Tonight, the board will be considering advertising of opposed draft ordinance that will amend Chapter 15 of the Township Code of Ordinance ordinances to establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit on New Road. We will also be establishing a date for a public hearing to consider the adoption of the ordinance. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to authorize the Township Administration to advertise an ordinance amending the Township Code at Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic Section, to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on New Road from Second Street Pike to Hatborough Road, and to schedule a public hearing to consider adopting the ordinance in November 18th, 2020 board meeting.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Frank?
Nothing from me. Nothing further.
Eileen?
Nope.
Kim? Barry?
No, I mean, I support. I think actually Frank did a very nice job presenting the facts here. And interestingly enough, I think this is the only road on Second Street Pike that's 35 miles per hour. So bring it down to 25 would be very safe to do. So I would certainly support it.
I have no further comments on either. I support it. All those indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the township manager to execute a traffic signal permit plan on Upper Holland Road for the school warning system. Eileen?
Council Rock School District would like to make a revision to the existing school zone signals on Upper Holland Road between Township Road and the Richborough Elementary School entrance. This revision would relocate the flashing warning devices and associated signs to incorporate new driveways into the school zone, and to eliminate two of the four school zone flashing signals to create one school zone for the three schools, Richborough Elementary, Richborough Middle School, and the new Star Center. Any revisions to the existing signal permit plan require the township to apply to PennDOT for a modification to this signal permit plan. We need to approve a resolution authorizing submission of the permit application and authorize our township manager to sign the application on behalf of the township and then submit the plan for PennDOT approval. The school district is responsible for all the costs associated with this project. May I make a motion, sir?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution R-20-24, authorizing the township manager to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a revision to the school zone signals on Upper Holland Road between the elementary school zone and the Richborough Middle School to create a single school zone for all three schools on Upper Holland Road as requested by the Council Stock, Council Rock School District.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Eileen, anything further?
No, I just think that this will be very helpful to many of our residents when, hopefully, it will change the timing for them to be on and just make sure that we have the signs on the cross streets to make people aware that the signs of when the signals will be on. But I think it's, it's going to help our residents.
Thanks, Eileen. Kim, anything else?
I agree with Eileen. Yeah, I think it's going to make it better in that area for our kids.
Frank?
Nothing further to add.
Barry?
I agree. Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree too. Three separate school zones would be very difficult, so. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is consider appointment of a certified public accountant. Kim?
Yes, Section 917 of the Second Class Township Code authorizes the Board of Supervisors to appoint a certified public accounting firm to conduct an annual audit of the township accounts. B. Berg Ball and Company has previously conducted the township audit over a three-year contract. In the past years, the Finance Department has solicited proposals for this service, and B. Berg Ball and Company has always submitted the least costly proposal. They have again submitted a proposal that is worthy of consideration for another three-year period. The total cost for the 2019 audit is $26,200, and B. Berg Ball and Company proposes an increase of $350 for each new year of the contract. This fee includes an audit of the Northampton Township Volunteer Fire Company, since it is considered a component unit of township government. I believe these fees are very competitive based on the previous experience with proposals, solicitations, and the increases are a modest 1.33%. In accordance with the Second Class Township Code, an advertisement was placed in the Bucks County Courier-Times at least 30 days in advance of the anticipated appointment of a CPA firm to complete the township audits. The administration recommends the board accept the proposal from B. Berg Ball and Company to complete the audits for 2020, 2021, and 2022. It's important that we continue to have continuity for another three-year period. Cindy Berg Ball, principal in the firm and primary contact for our account and their staff, has been most professional during previous audits. With that, if I can make a motion?
Please.
I move to accept the proposal from B. Berg Ball and Company, Warrington, PA, dated November 22nd, 2016, to complete the 2020 through 2022 audit of township accounts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Kim?
This company has done an excellent job over the years, and they are very they listen, and if we have any questions, they're, they'll answer them right away. So I think it's great to continue with them.
Great, thank you. Frank?
Nothing further than.
Eileen?
Yeah, so this has, I think it's wonderful that they're going to come back. It has been nice to meet with them. But I think that this is, since we keep doing this every three years, I would like to suggest that we have a conversation in the future about whether having elected auditors. I think that is something that we can talk about. I I know that the legislature has said that it's up to each of the townships, is what I was told. So I just think it's something that we all need to have a conversation with about in the future, not now, just bringing meta.
Thanks, Eileen. Barry?
I agree. I think Kim did a nice, good overview.
Nothing further from me too. We have a motion to second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Before we move into liaison reports, I just want to again remind the public, if you'd like to make a public comment, please email publiccomment@nhtwp.org. You can either come on live, and we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to speak, or if you would just like to write your comment, please indicate that you don't want to come on, and I will happy to read your comment. Please try to keep to about 300 words, and I will read it for the record. So with that, Kim, you're first up.
Okay. Just a couple of words about the senior center. We are still, the senior center is still closed to our seniors. But just to let you know that there are things that you could pick from virtually to do. There's new stress management and mindful meditation class, all kinds of exercises, and different different book clubs and coloring club. And, and so just get in touch with the senior center if you have any questions. The number's 215-357-8199. Parks and Rec. Tonight, I just have two announcements regarding Parks and Rec. First, despite the pandemic, many new classes are being offered, and old favorites are back as well, some virtually and some now in person. In addition to an array of programs that have been offered virtually, it is clear that people are anxious to come back to the rec center in person. New in-person classes offered by the Park and Rec Department, like archery and yoga, have filled fast, while some old favorites like tennis, karate, pickleball, and T-ball are also finding new life. Each one of these programs has filled to capacity and has a waitlist. I must mention that not all programs have returned, only those that are outside and can be offered within the CDC guidelines. It's clear that people are ready to be active and engaged, but are choosing activities that are naturally easier to follow guidelines so they can remain healthy. However, in the next few weeks, we'll be moving some classes indoors. And yes, those classes also will be conducted following the CDC state and local guidelines that have been established for indoor programs. Second, don't forget the Township's Halloween event will take place this Saturday, October 31st, outside the municipal park. I reported a great length last month about the event, and tonight will just direct you to the Northampton Rec website to find out the details. Pre-registration has been ongoing. There are a number of people and businesses who will be displaying their scarecrows and trunks for all to enjoy as well. As, and as of this past Sunday, over 100 families already have registered for the costume parade. This event is free, but due to the pandemic, we need to have a specific plan and put controls in place, thus requiring pre-registration. If you have not already registered, there's still maybe time, a time slot or two still available, but I wouldn't wait any longer. Visit northhamterrec.com to register. Lastly, I must say that putting these programs and activities in place has not been easy, but our staff continues to work hard so our residents have the opportunities to have some normalcy. It is evident that our residents see that Parks and Rec is critical to their wellbeing. We are very lucky to have such a dedicated and creative Parks and Rec staff.
Yes, we are lucky. That's true. Thank you, Kim. Frank?
Yeah, always like to do some good news during a pandemic. The municipal authority will not have a rate increase for either water or sewer in the coming year. So that's something good moving forward. The library, library is open for computer use, though there is some limited time, depending upon the number of people coming in to use it, and also for getting books from the stacks. There's still a lot of programs online. I think the librarian's been working really hard to come up with good programs online for both adults and kids. So you may want to go in and look at some of them to see if any of those offerings are something that you might be interested in. I just make a comment on masks. I did stop at the library, you know, right after it opened. And I asked how things were going, and for the most part, everything was going good. Our residents are cooperating. It's a great thing, and people are getting what they want. But they occasionally run into somebody who doesn't want to wear a mask. And the answer is, if you're going into the library, put a mask on, protect yourself, and protect our employees in the library, as well as any other users in there. If you don't want to wear a mask, call the library, get the book that you want. It can be delivered to you in the parking lot. And if you go online, you can see the schedule for doing that. So you don't have to go in and make a big deal of it. Just do it that way, and that way you feel good. You're not wearing your mask, and, and everybody else in the library feels safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Barry?
Yeah, I'm good, Adam. All good. Thanks. That's my report.
Thanks, Barry. Eileen? You're on mute?
Nothing new to report, but I just hope that everyone has a very safe Halloween.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick things for my report. One, you'll see on the township signs, there is a food drive at the police department on November 7th. So if you have an opportunity to bring some non-perishable foods, canned and non-perishable foods bought by the police station, that would be a big help. And just from the fire department side, whereas we're rolling into winter, mind everyone, please get your chimney checked, get your chimney clean. And before you cook that big Thanksgiving dinner, just make sure your oven and stove top are clean, and you know where your fire extinguisher is. Hope you don't have to use it, but it's always good to know where it is. Next up is a manager's report. Bob?
Two quick items. Our trash collection has improved, at least from the township's viewpoint. We are probably 95% back to where, where we were before COVID, and I expect the service to even get better. There are still the occasional misses, so don't think that they never miss a trash can or recycling can or a yard waste can. But that does happen, and when it does happen, please call the township office. We have direct communication on a regular basis with the folks on the street, and we can have them come back and pick up your materials. So pleased to report that. I'm also pleased to report that at least preliminarily right now, and it's almost finalized, the the 2020 bu, or 2021 budget, I should say, will not have a recommended tax increase, and there will not be any other increases in fees. So status quo for 2021, and I'll be presenting the budget at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Next up is solicitor's report. Joe?
No report other than the minutes should reflect that the board has met an executive session several times since your last public meeting. Those executive sessions took place on October 1st. Present for the executive session were all members of the Board of Supervisors, the Township Manager, and me. Discuss during that executive session was a single matter of pending and ongoing litigation. No official action was taken during that executive session. On October 7th, the board met briefly in executive session. On October 7th, the Board met briefly in executive session. Again, all members of the Board of Supervisors were present, the Township Manager and me. I believe the Township Engineer was also present for part of that executive session. Two matters were discussed. One was a matter of ongoing litigation, and the second was a personnel matter. On October 24th, the Board met briefly in executive session. All of these, I might add, were virtual. October 1st, October 7th, and October 21st. All members of the Board of Supervisors were present, Township Manager and me. I updated them on the same ongoing piece of litigation that we have been discussing for several executive sessions. And then finally, this evening, following the Board's agenda meeting, we held a brief executive session. All members of the Board of Supervisors were present, the Township Engineer, the Township Manager and me, and also the Assistant Township Manager. Two matters of ongoing litigation were discussed. Again, no official action was taken during either of those executive sessions. And with that, happy Halloween, everyone.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers' Report. Amanda?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amanda. We are now to public comment, and I do believe we have one, maybe two, that want to speak. Christina Hartley, do you want to speak, or do you want me to read your note? And if you can just put your hand up, we can open up your microphone. Oh, there we go.
All right, can you hear me?
Hi, would you like to address the board, or would you like me to just read what you wrote?
I'd like to address the board, please.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, just say your name and address again for the record.
My name is Christina Hartley, and I live on Spring Avenue in Holland.
Thank you.
The reason I'm addressing the board today, and I've already contacted all of you, as well as the Police Chief and the Township Manager, but it's regarding no left turn signs that have been installed at the end of Spring Avenue at Buck Road. I don't know how the decision was made to put this sign up, but as a longtime resident, nearly 40 years living here, I could tell you that it's a bad decision. It's a dangerous intersection. If any of you have been to Spring Avenue, it comes out right at the bottom of the railroad bridge, the bottom of the two hills, down from Village Shires and East Talon. But forcing people to make right turns, it's a blind intersection when you're turning onto... If you try to make a right-hand turn onto Buck Road, if someone was, you know, swerving around bicyclist or whatever, it's going to be head-on collision. And if you have a very large vehicle, it's virtually impossible to make that turn. If you try to make the left, you cannot see to your right, but you can kind of creep out, look and see that it's clear to the left, see if it's clear to the right, and you can go that way. Like I said, it's a dangerous intersection either way, but forcing people to make right-hand turns all the time is just really not a viable choice. And I mean, I watched the trash truck struggle to make a right-hand turn. I have neighbors that haul big trailers. You simply cannot make a right-hand turn safely out of Spring Avenue. So that's my main issue. I don't know how this decision was made. Apparently, Mr. Calagrio contacted me and said that there's some sort of a a safety study going on. And he also informed me that at this moment, that the sign is not enforceable, which I feel like, well, if it's not, I mean, if it's not enforceable, the sign should not be there, because you don't want to set the example of people. You can just ignore traffic signs. And I think until there is an ordinance, or you know, the law has decided whether we're going to be restricted, that sign has to come down. But I'm strongly requesting that that no left turn sign is taken down, and you know, maybe the speed limit can be lowered, or there's some other solution, but that is just not a good or fair solution to the residents of Spring Avenue. I think that's about all I have to say about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. It is important to us. I'll just ask Bob if you want to just talk about how we want to try to bring this to a resolution.
Sure. As I wrote to Ms. Hartley, we will be meeting out there at the intersection with PennDOT. I don't know what it's going to eventually end up looking like. Christina may have a very good point that it's harder to make a right than a left. But PennDOT's a state road, Township owns Spring Avenue. Our police and our traffic engineers see a liability issue there. We need to address that one way or the other. And we're going to meet at the intersection before the end of the year. I have to coordinate with PennDOT, and we'll see if we come up with a solution. I don't have an answer right now on what that will look like.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you again for your comments, and we will continue to work on that issue.
Next up, we hear it. We understand. I've talked to a lot of residents on Spring Avenue already, and the same message comes through that they all know how to traverse that intersection, and we get that.
Okay, thank you again. Keep that in mind and keep us informed.
Yep.
Thanks. Next is, I think Pam Duffy. Is Pam Duffy the Pam on the attendees list?
Yes, yes, that is me.
Hello. So do you want me to read your comment that you wrote, or would you like to address the board?
I could read it, and I can go on from there. Good evening, Township Supervisors.
Could you just, I'm sorry, could you give your name and address for the record before you start? Sorry about that.
Sure. And my husband's here as well. It's Pam and Jerry Duffy. The address is 125 Hope Road, Holland, PA.
Thank you.
Okay, so the comment that I wrote to the supervisors was, please do not approve building. It's regarding the super gas Wawa that is proposed in Holland on the Wright property at Buck and Roxville Road. And I wrote, please do not approve building this monstrous gas super Wawa in beautiful Quain Holland Village at Buck and Roxville Road on the Wright property. Even though the land is owned C2, this high sword does not belong in a mostly residential area. We don't need it. There is our small Wawa that is down right across the street from the Wright property that meets our needs. There is a Shell gas station, which will become a blight if, because Wawa, nobody could compete with Wawa, that is currently on the property that will, I'm sure, go out of business. We have two super Wawas, Richborough, and then the new one they just built at Bustleton and Street Road, within three miles of the proposed site. And we have a petition that we just started, you know, six weeks ago, whatever. Thousand residents of Holland have signed that petition to date. It is still going around. And people, we don't want this here. We are your residents. You know, we want you to do the best you can for us. And we would like you to listen to us, please. You know, Holland is a beautiful quaint village. Most of it is residential. People have wells. You know, there are so many issues with this. I know Wawa hasn't even, I understand they're going to... They've submitted one plan, and now they're revising it or something, and the second plan has not been submitted. I also tuned in to the planning meeting, and I don't know if anything's changed since that planning meeting was about two weeks ago. But, you know, please, please think about your friends and neighbors in beautiful Quain Holland. I mean, there's so much. There's light pollution. There's, Neshamani Creek is right there. The unwanted, the element that it's going to bring to the area. I mean, it's a gas station. You're going to put 100,000 gallons of gasoline in the ground. Most of the people, most of the people have well water that live in this area. My street does not, Hope Road, we do not, but most of our neighbors do. And I mean, it's such a danger. It's such a danger to have 100,000 gallons of gasoline in the ground supporting 16 pumps. My two neighbors on the end of the street will be 125 feet from the gas pumps. Like I said, there are so many numerous issues that we could get into. I precludes discussing it here, but please hear us. We're begging you. This will destroy beautiful, it's a historic quaint village. When I was a child, growing up in northeast Philadelphia, you know, I used to come to Holland was the promised land. And we would drive up 532, pass the windmill that was that flower shop right near where the old mill race used to be. You'd go over the chain link bridge, and it was just so beautiful and so quaint. And we still have a lot of that. The chain link bridge is long gone, but we still have a lot of that. And now, when you come into Holland that way, you'll see this monstrous Wawa. Understand that Wawa is paying for the roads. Please don't sell us out. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you for your comments. They are important. You actually did give the update that I was going to ask Bob to give, which is that there is a second plan due in. They are making some modifications. So there's not a ton of opportunity to comment on what that is yet until we see it. But we do appreciate you coming out, and there will be more opportunities in the future as the process goes on for the public to interact on this issue with us. So thank you very much.
One thing, Chairman, that I would like to let, or you can let everybody know, about signing up for our emails, our email alerts, because there are a lot of things that are going on in the Township that it would be very advantageous for our residents to get these alerts. And Adam, if you want to explain how to go about doing it, because I really think it's very important, because so many people come on here and say, well, I don't know what's going on, and I didn't know. And I know that there have been email alerts sent out by our administration about most of these topics.
Thanks, Eileen. That is a great idea. So, you know, for the public to keep on this issue and many other issues, it's a great opportunity to get a note in your email fairly regularly. Just go to the northhampton township.com webpage, and on the right-hand side, you'll see a little "Thank you, Bill", get email updates. Just click on that, put in your email address, and you will automatically be on the list. I agree with Eileen. I strongly encourage everybody to sign up. I think one thing that we do hear a lot, and from all the Board of Supervisors here, this is somebody says, oh, I didn't realize, or I didn't know. And we really do try hard to get the word out, and this is a great way to do that. So thank you, Eileen, for the good idea. And again, thank you, Pam and Jerry, for your comments. We do appreciate that. I don't believe we have any other comments. Is that right, Bill? Okay.
I think so, Adam.
Yep, I don't think so either, so.
Yeah, I couldn't get my screenshot off. Yes, there are no other public comments at this time.
Thank you. So at this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.